Good evening and welcome to the April 5, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting for South Whitehall Township. I'm going to call this meeting to order. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all Commissioners are present this evening. At this time, I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for the public's access. I'd like to ask our Township Manager, Tom Pichucci, to please review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then mute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session this evening prior to our meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who'd like to approach the board? Yes, sir. If you'd please come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Make sure that it's turned on. There should be a green light. Very good. Press the button.
Okay, I thought it was green. Okay.
Good evening.
Dave Dory, 1351 Deerfield Drive. I have copies, about nine copies, of the Air Pro Retiree Newsletter, and this features Morris Halpin and what he's done for the Greenawalls Fire Company. And the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is Morris and Carol, who live on Huckleberry Road next to Tall Timbers, will be moving to Leather Corner Post. He's building a house for himself and then another house for his brother in a pole barn up in Leather Corner Post. But Morris has done so much for the community. First paragraph references some things he's done in connection with the Air Products retirees, but he's worked with the township cooking hot dogs at National Night Out, cleaning the fence after the floods down at Weir Mill Park. He's volunteering everywhere. This is an article on how he saved $5,000 for Greenawalls Fire Company. And right now, and it goes on to say, anytime there's a piece of equipment doesn't work at Greenawalls, whether it's a chainsaw or whatever, Morris looks at it first. The other night, he serviced a zero-turn Toro lawnmower, riding lawnmower. So anyway, I have these here for you to look at sometime.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And to conclude, I don't know if there's a township recognition program for certain citizens, but Morris has certainly contributed not only to the fire company, but to township and the whole area.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, David. Thank you. I'll distribute these to the board and also to our administration. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board this evening? Anyone online, Dave? Okay. Moving on to our Agenda Item 5, our meeting minutes. They've been distributed to the board for your review from our March 15, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the board on said meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wasn't present at the meeting.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. We have a very full agenda this evening. Before we discuss our business items, we have two very special presentations to recognize two of our volunteer firefighters this evening for their distinguished service to our community. Agenda Item 6A is recognition for Rich Tice, Woodlawn Fire Company, 50 years of service. Rich, if I could ask you to come up to the podium to stand? Thank you. So we've prepared a proclamation. I would like to read it.
Okay.
Woodlawn Fire Department Distinguished Service Award to Deputy Chief Richard R. Tice for 50 years of service to South Whitehall Township. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and citizens of South Whitehall Township would like to take this time to recognize you, Richard R. Tice, for your 50 years of volunteer service, beginning 1973 to 2023, as you served as Lieutenant, Captain, Assistant Chief, and Deputy Chief of Woodlawn Fire Department. South Whitehall Township applauds your accomplishments, which are too numerous to count, and we thank you for your incredible sacrifice throughout the years to South Whitehall Township and the surrounding communities of Lehigh County and beyond. We honor you, Richard R. Tice, and are truly grateful for your outstanding service to this great community. Congratulations to you for a job well done.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard to believe when you're 57 that you could be 50 years. What's that? Oh, I was born in 57. I'm sorry about that. No, it's been quite a journey. I've got to meet a lot of great people, and I've got to see the fire service evolve from the days when you had to leave your window cracked open to hear the siren go off that you knew there was a call, and then run down to the station and grab a pair of boots and coat that hopefully fit, and then jump on the back of a truck, and your only safety device was your hand holding on to the rail. And those guys that got there late had to jump up on the hose bed and get dressed up there, which that was a whole nother set of safety rules because you had to duck down, otherwise you'd hit your head going out the door. Barry Search was actually the same height as me when he joined. And a couple of shots there, that's what happens. But no, thank you very much for the recognition. I've got a long list of people to thank and had a lot of great people along the way, but a lot of things, some of them turned out better than others. But I can tell you people of South Whitehall Township that this South Whitehall Fire Department has evolved into what I would think is a professional fire department. You guys have well-trained emergency workers in all aspects, and I can guarantee anyone living or passing through South Whitehall will not have a problem with the service they get. God forbid they need us. But the three departments you have are well-trained, well-equipped, thanks to all of the funding and support we get from our first-class township. So on behalf of all my brothers and sisters, thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you, Rich. Don't go away. We want to get a photo with you. We want to get a photo with you. I do want to mention also, I want to thank your family for the sacrifice they've made over these 50 years. I'm sure there were a lot of dinners and events that you were not present for. So thank you also for letting us have Rich.
My mom's here. She's 95 years old. My mom.
Oh, thank you.
Before I had my driver's license, she used to drive me down to drop me off at the fire station.
Well, if you'd please pause for a moment, I'm going to ask the board. And Tom and Chief Dorney, if you'd come down front, and we'll get a photograph with Rich.
Keep the handcuffs up there, will you?
Thank you all. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 6B. We have a second presentation this evening for Fire Chief Jay Heiklin from Sutronia Fire Department to recognize his retirement after 23 years of service to South Whitehall Township. Chief Heiklin, if you'd please come up to the podium. Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation that was we will present to you this evening. Sutronia Fire Department Distinguished Service Award to Chief Jay Heiklin for 23 years of service to South Whitehall Township. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and citizens of South Whitehall Township would like to take this time to acknowledge you, Jay Heiklin, for your 23 years of volunteer service to the residents of South Whitehall Township as a member of Sutronia Fire Department. A huge thank you to you for your dedication and leadership as Chief of Sutronia Fire Department for the past 13 years, as well as your contributions as President of the Lehigh County Fire Chiefs Association for the past 11 years. In closing, there are not enough words to express our appreciation to you for your outstanding public service to this great community. We congratulate you upon your retirement, and we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'll just say a few words, probably a little less than Rich, but I do appreciate Rich going first, because I can say ditto to everything he said. It was very, very well said. I look at my 23 years, and I was talking to Barry earlier about this tonight. It always felt like I was the new guy. And when you're going up against these guys, these two that have been put in the years they have, like I said, it's been a real honor and pleasure to work side by side with them throughout my 23 years, knowing the amount of experience they had. And certainly, the township and my involvement here and dealing with the administration over those 23 years has been phenomenal. And there was a lot of, certainly, sometimes we were, there was some conflict, and when it was overcome, everybody learned from it. So it was great. It was a great, like I said, experience for me. I still plan on showing my face and being around and being involved. I don't think I can totally let go of being involved in some capacity, so I'm looking forward to that. Just a new direction. My granddaughter arrived back on September 30, so that was very exciting for me. That's our first grandchild, and looking forward to spending a lot of time with her and the rest of the family. But I want to thank you very much again for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take another moment to take a photograph? Thank you.
That's in order.
Thank you. And I do want to thank all the volunteers who are here this evening in support of both Chief Heiklin and/or Mr. Tice. Appreciate the support that you give and for your service to our community. Thank you all very much. So at this time, we'll move on to our ordinances. We're at Agenda Item 7A. We have a motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts. And I will turn this over to our Township Manager, Tom Pichucci.
Thank you. Official action is requested in the form of a motion to advertise the draft ordinance. This ordinance is necessary due to the fact that the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau has released new guidelines that cause Portnoy Law Associates, which is our solicitor that has been appointed for the limited purpose of collecting utility bills, so refuse water and sewer that are unpaid. So Portnoy had to change the first step of its collection process. As a result of the new guidelines, Portnoy began sending validation notices back in 2022 for the initial contact to the property owner. They did not charge the township for this service in 2022 due to the change in the law. However, now they are seeking to effectuate the fee schedule change, which must be done via ordinance. The Municipal Claims and Tax Lean Act sets forth the fees that the township's allowed to collect or that you can legally charge. The township has done so via ordinance. You cannot amend it via resolution. So you must go through the ordinance amendment process. So the biggest change is the fact that they will be charging a $25 fee in 2023 that will be assessed to the property owner and not the township. Any accounts that are paid in full during this step will negate the need for the township to then pay Portnoy the $40-plus certified postage charge that was previously charged at the first collection step. So that's the really substantive change to this ordinance. I did go through and provide you an itemized list or a matrix of all the changes. Overall, they are not necessarily significant. There's some minimal changes, but at this time, it would get us in compliance with the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau changes. The contract with Portnoy, just so you're aware, runs through the end of 2024, and so we basically need to utilize their services until that time.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I'll open it up to the board. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item? Okay, none from the board. Any public comment on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 8A, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and implementing changes to the designated pension plan officials for the Nationwide Pension Case 632-80048. And I'll ask Tom to present again.
Thank you. Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, and I are requesting approval to be designated as the pension plan officials for the township's defined contribution pension plan. The funds are currently held with Nationwide, and the current resolution lists township officials that are no longer employed by the township. So we are seeking to just effectuate that change.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Any board discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, we have a resolution amending Resolution 2021-35, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act 53 PS 6924101, appointing the Business Privilege Tax Administrator. And Tom, if you'd present.
Thank you. This resolution is necessary, and this appointment is necessary due to the fact that the previous business administrator was Deanna Valkova. She has now shifted to the payroll administrator position following the retirement of Susan Lawson. So we feel it's appropriate to now appoint Cheryl Giorgioni as the BPT Administrator until, just on an interim basis, until we have someone permanent to assume those duties.
Very good, Tom. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, we have a resolution extending conditional offer of employment for the entry-level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to candidate number 63063, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examination to confirm fitness for duty. And I'll ask Chief Dorney to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This is just a process for civil service. We're working our way down our civil service list that was adopted previously, and we are at candidate number 63063 to start the background process for his employment. So I'm officially requesting the conditional offer be extended pursuant to the background investigation, polygraph exam, medical exam, and psychological examination to confirm the fitness for duty.
Thank you, Chief Tony.
You're welcome.
Any board discussion on this resolution? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, we have a resolution extending conditional final approval granted to a major plan entitled Bridge Farms Phase 1A. Dave, will you present on this one? I'm sorry, Greg. Good evening.
My name's Anthony Giovanini. I'm attorney with the Office of Brockland, DeVito. Our office represents K. Walbert LLC, the developer for the Ridge Farms project. On March 1st of 2023, my colleague, Attorney James Preston, submitted the formal request for the extension. Although our client has completed most of the conditions, we are respectfully requesting some additional time through May 31 of 2023 to diligently complete everything.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any, is there any staff comment on this?
What date was that? I'm sorry. They're requesting, I'm sorry. They're requesting May 31. Initially, staff requested three months until July 6. Okay. Yeah, so that's what we want to go with, correct? Yeah.
The recommendation is July the 6th.
July 6, yes.
Is there any board discussion?
Commissioner Kelly, I think our board was given a lot of information, but just for everyone here and online, can you just summarize the things that you're asking an extension for and the reason for that?
Sure. And I apologize. Typically, Attorney Preston would handle this, and our engineer was unable to be here this evening. So I do not have the intimate knowledge of the final punch list items that need to be completed. But I can tell you that it is a very short list, and we are working diligently to accomplish those tasks.
And Tony, do you have any comments about it?
The engineering for this phase is complete. I think that it's down to some agreements and paperwork items.
Okay.
And Commissioner Osborne, several of those items are being worked out between the developers' team and my office and staff. So there are documents that are in the drafting process, the discussion process, that have not been completed. Now, other than the documents, I'm not sure what else might be left, but certainly that's part of it.
It sounds like the staff, our engineering, and our solicitor are comfortable with the request. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other board comment, is there any public comment on this agenda item? And is the applicant amenable to the extension that we've presented this evening?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8E, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Montar Group LLC Proposed Self-Storage Building. Turn this over to our planner, Greg Adams.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the properties located 3350 and 3354 Walbert Avenue. The plan proposes to consolidate the two parcels, raise the existing residential and agricultural structures, and construct a three-story, 112,800-square-foot self-storage facility, a 16-space parking lot, and associated stormwater management facilities on the 2.007-acre parcel. At their March 16, 2023 meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended preliminary final plan approval to this plan with 18 conditions and six waiver-deferral requests that were favorably recommended. In the interim, the applicant has addressed two conditions, and staff has added four conditions standard to approving resolutions. The applicant requests that the board grant conditional preliminary final approval to the plan, and staff has no issues with the request. I believe the applicant's team is here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Greg. My name is Bob Tucker. I'm an attorney at Kaplan Stewart, representing the applicant this evening. Greg outlined it pretty much. We're here requesting that you adopt the resolution before you preliminary final plan approval. I'm going to turn it over to our engineer to answer any questions.
Good evening. Mary Bacher with Bowler Engineering. As was mentioned, the description of the site, it's just a three-story self-storage, internal access, no exterior doors, 16 spaces in the front. We include the streetscape amenities as required by the ordinance, so trees, landscaping, sidewalks, and the Lanta facilities that were repressed by Lanta. We're currently working through the conditions as we're discussing. And I think we have Act 167 in hand. We're waiting on HOP approval, but we're in process on Cycle 3, and we're waiting on PDS as well. Any questions about the project?
I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Thank you. So this property is zoned for this use, and I do appreciate that it's a low-volume traffic use. But I do have some questions. Does this facility have any auto or RV storage?
I don't believe so, Frank. No.
No. Okay, thank you. Is it climate-controlled? It is. It is. Is it adjustable with each rentable unit, or is the entire building climate-controlled? Okay, so where are the air conditioning and the heating, the HVAC, all that equipment?
Right now, they're located on the roof. With this building and the energy efficiency of it, we've actually gotten significant rebates in the past on similarly designed buildings because our set points are only 60 degrees on the heat, 80 on the cool. So there's really not that much conditioning, but we use very high efficiency. And there'll be, I believe, two sets of units on the roof.
Okay, and we have residential right across the street. How loud will those units be? Will it interfere with the noise ordinance that we have? I just want to make sure that our residents are okay.
I'm 100% positive.
Okay.
And I'll expand on that. So if you just imagine your heating to 6 degrees cool and 80, I would guess these units probably run maybe less than 5% of the time. Because, I mean, our set point, our average temperature is usually right in that guide range anyway. So they're not going to be running that much.
Okay, and what are your planned hours of operation?
I don't have, I believe it's like 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Is, we went through that during the meeting, and I just don't recall the exact timeframes, but they are called right before early morning to early evening.
Okay. You know, having said that, that it's zoned for this, it's a low-volume traffic, again, I appreciate that. Because we all know how busy Walbert and Cedar Crest can get, and especially with the influx of development going on. It's going to be really busy. But one of my, actually, I have two concerns with it. And one is the in-and-out on Walbert. I know there was discussion about right-in, right-out only, and then it went through PennDOT Public Safety, and you're allowed to make the left-hand turn as well now. There is only one entrance that I can see. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just concerned, you know, with that left turn. You know, you're going to have vehicles coming in. You're going to have pickups with trailers. You're going to have U-Hauls. And I really worry about that left-hand out going on to Walbert, especially during busy times. I don't know if you've entertained perhaps like signage, like between these hours, no left turn, or something like that.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, in the future, if this were to become a problem, and we have to do, like you're saying, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, no left turns, we're definitely open to adjusting it to ensure public safety throughout the area.
Right, right. I just would like to see that addressed before something would happen.
Yes.
Sorry. So the driveway actually to the left where you're concerned, so if you're facing Walbert and you're looking to the left, there's actually over 500 feet of site distance. So it is a very clear view. Also, it is super-low trips, so it wasn't even enough to trigger the need for a traffic study. And PennDOT has not requested that it be modified to a right-in, right-out, or even just a partial limited-access driveway. So the movements that we're talking about are very infrequent. I believe it's like four times per peak hour or something like that. It's not something that we'd anticipate being a frequent movement. So that combined with the, you know, the exceptional site distance that's provided there, just to that straight section, while we see the concern, you know, we've worked through kind of addressing that as best as we can, and we feel that it's a safe condition.
All right. Like I said, even if it's four vehicles, it just takes one.
Yeah, understood. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm being very respectful. You know, I understand you've gone through a long process with this.
Sure.
The other, the other thing is because it is in a residential area, and it is on Walbert Avenue, which is, I consider, the main corridor of our township. And it's the corridor that leads to our township building, which is the heart of our township. We have a mix of residential. We have a mix of commercial. And we have, of course, this new development coming in at Cedar Crest and Walbert. Is there anything you would be willing to do to maybe fit in with the character a little more? The building, the front of the building?
Absolutely. So the applicant has already made changes at the request of the Planning Commission, twice, I believe, in both the colors of the exterior and then the finish of the exterior to be more in line with adjacent developments. So the colors have been changed to more of a neutral color palette. And then, if you can see on the screen, veneer accents have been added as well. So I believe that is in character with recently proposed developments along the corridor.
So the picture that is being shown up there is actually the picture of the changes?
Correct. Yes, this has been modified.
Is that?
If it was St., was the hospital?
St. Luke's.
They were giving me that picture, and we changed the colors.
Right. I see the stonework, but it looks like siding to me. The vertically going up and down.
Right now, the exterior has not been decided, but that is currently is a metal insulated panel that is a high-efficiency panel that is very good for the environment.
Okay. Is it a siding, the panel?
It's a metal insulated panel. So it's not like a residential siding at that certain point.
Okay, all right. And, you know, I'm just thinking of our SALDO ordinance, you know, Chapter 312-3, which provides for harmonious development of the township. And I just, I want to see this use blend in really nicely with the character of this main corridor, this heart of our township. And I also want to make sure that it's not something that's going to be glaring in our residential areas, that they're going to see this in their yards at night or their windows, you know. So those are my concerns.
I just want to reiterate that your Planning Commission did do a good job of making sure that we designed it in a way that's compatible with the surrounding area. And like Mary said, that we've come back twice with something that was more appropriate, and finally, the Planning Commission was accepting of the look and design.
Yeah, I realize. I realize you went through the process, and I appreciate that. So thanks for answering my questions.
Are there any other board comments? Just Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hodges, I appreciate your questions. I had some of the very same myself. So if I'd like to, I'd like to maybe go a little one-layer deeper on some of those questions. Okay, so the hours of operation, we heard, you know, were not exactly known this evening, but limited. Okay. So how is your facility going to be? How is that going to be controlled? Are there access gates that will be closed?
So, no. With regards to how big the property is, there are no, it's not a gated environment. But if you look, there will be access controls. So in order to get into the project, you have to punch in your keypad. So the way it works is it's a three-story building. If you're on the first floor, your code to get into the building will allow you through the door, and then through only onto the first floor. Conversely, if you're on the second floor, you can get in through the door. And then when you go on the elevator, it only allows you to get off at your floor. So there's access control limiting any access into the building.
So the car will not work?
Correct. After hours, correct. So we can limit it so that if the office is open at 9:00, people can only get in at 8:00 o'clock. So yes, there is access control getting into the building.
Okay. So this is a very detailed question, then, that I'm going to ask next. So is your facility sophisticated enough to know that if someone has gone in to your property, that you know that they got out?
No, because it is a free out when you come down. Because on the elevators, you cannot, I can limit people to go up to a second floor.
Right.
But due to life safety, I can't restrict them to exit the building. So it is a, it is a free out to get outside of the building.
Okay.
Due to the means of egress. Now, these projects do have surveillance, just like everywhere else.
You know where I'm going with it.
Cameras throughout the building. So we will have one, what, two or three in the elevator lobby. We'll have cameras on the outside, the loading area, people coming through the entrance. So yes, we will have a detailed, probably a-camera DVR on the system.
And a surveillance company who's watching this? Or you'll just have cameras in case there's an issue?
Typically, we don't have off-site. There are some circumstances that we do do off-site surveillance that will monitor at night. So if someone comes onto the building, they can actually do strobes and all. But right now, that is only typically for different areas.
Okay, all right. I'm also concerned about the left turn. And I'll just, you know, personally, I'll need some more time to think about that, but I am concerned about that. So I see the rendition.
Yes.
So it leads me to ask this question. Is there illumination on your company title, like the self-storage? Is that illuminated?
The self-storage will be in compliance with the sign code. We actually just engaged a sign vendor to confirm what the signage requirement is and to obviously apply for the correct permit.
Okay, and that kind of leads into Commissioner Hodges' questions about, you know, pollution is not just what you smell. It's what you hear. It's what you see. So the off-site lighting is going to be sensitive to this topic?
Right now, besides for the frontage, there is one exit on the left that whenever you have a stairwell and means of egress, you have to have lighting for life safety. So at nighttime, someone comes out, we have to illuminate that exit. Besides that, on all three sides of the building, there are no wall packs. There are no light pollution along the sides of the building that would cause any of the neighbors. Along the front, there's a light study, but yes, it's contained. I'll let Mary speak to the onsite.
Sure. Beyond the wall packs for the emergency egress, which again are just on the left side of the building, there's a sidewalk coming from the stair tower. I think there's two or three pole lights within the parking lot. And then that does comply with the lighting ordinance. And we have a clearance letter from the Township's consultants today.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And I just want to expand on the parking. I built a 450,000-square-foot building, 350. They have 25 parking spaces. So while we have 13, there may be two or three cars on this site. I mean, it is a very low use for the area.
I just have one question about the lighting. Thank you for explaining that. In the front, in addition to the sign, it would appear that the section under the sign is transparent. That's glass, and you can, you see into the hallways where the units are located, correct? Outside of the hours of operation, are those hallways lit? Because from the outside, that would create a significant amount of light.
The hallways are on motion sensors.
Okay.
So basically, every single light has an individual motion sensor. So it's like some of the new Walmarts have it that you walk down and the lights just go on as you go through.
So, you know, in the middle of the night, you wouldn't expect those three floors to be projecting that light out. Thank you.
No reason.
And just to follow up to that, so the actual sign that says self-storage, will that stay illuminated all night as well, or will that be dimmed as you're going to be closed?
Whatever the sign ordinance is, I have not looked at. Some places require internally illuminated, some are externally illuminated. So whatever the local sign ordinance says, we will comply with. I just don't know the details of it right now.
And was there any consideration to, it's very lime green. I don't know what colors are proposed for the new development across the street, but certainly this isn't a color that I've seen in any of the commercial developments surrounding this. Has there been any consideration to be more in keeping with what is currently in this section of the township for continuity?
That is my brain in color, yes. It has never been asked, I mean, we presented this in November. We presented this in March. After, we actually presented it in February, and they came back and asked us to look like the place across the street. We immediately complied, sent it off to everyone, and I haven't had any other requests or comments reported.
Thank you.
I would like, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I would like to say this. You obviously have the right to develop this piece of land. And in some ways, you may feel like it's a bit unfair for you to be asked these kinds of questions. So I want to say I thank you for your sensitivity, you know, to what our board is presenting to you this evening and what you may have heard before from the Planning Commission. It all really has to do with this specific location, so, which is not your, you know, you have the right to do what you're doing. But I just wanted to thank you for being sensitive to what you're hearing and also into the future. You said if there was any concern about a left turn, you'd be willing to talk about it. So it does sound to me like you're being very community-friendly in something that you have a right to do.
And I am. I wish that my neighbor was here, who's next door to me. I've gotten friendly with her across the street, talked to her, I gave her my contact information.
That's nice.
I need to be part of the fabric of the community, operate this, and be aware of our neighbors, without a doubt.
Thank you very much for that.
Sounds like you'd be a good neighbor.
Yes, without, yes.
Yeah, I do believe that. I also have another question. Sorry. Do you have any real-life pictures of this? You know, we're seeing this digital image. It's, you know, it looks, it looks very nice. But do you have any, you have other facilities. Do you have any real-life pictures of them?
I do, yes.
Do you have them with you? Could we view them?
I will say in, with regards to current technology on providing renderings, it is, it's fairly accurate of what it's going to look like, but no, I do not have anything.
Nice for this township. So traditional colors do not look like this. Your finishes do not. So even a photo of another facility would not be an accurate representation. During it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other board comment this evening? Are there any public comments? Anything online at all, Dave? Hearing and seeing none at this time, do we have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay. For the two reasons that I had mentioned, I have a problem with that left turn and safety, and I feel that it can be customized a little more for the character of the area. Although beautiful as it is, I'm thinking of our particular area. It's just my opinion. So, thank you.
Very good. So no, the motion carries four to one. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8F, we have a resolution granting conditional preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Parkland School District New Operations Center. I'll call on our Township Planner, Greg Adams, to please present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop property located at 2619 Stadium Drive. The plan proposes to raise the existing structure and construct a two-story, 39,295-square-foot building, 90 parking spaces, and associated stormwater management facilities on the 8.70-acre property. Staff requests that the adoption of the approval resolution be tabled to a future meeting to allow staff to refine the conditions of approval. The applicant has submitted and signed the subdivision waiver from the time limitation, so we are good there. The school district would like to, however, discuss a waiver, sorry, a deferral request, a SALDO deferral request. So their team is here tonight to do that.
Thanks, Greg. Scott McMackin, the project engineer for the district. And I do have a couple folks from the district and the architect here, if there's any questions related to that. So just to quickly describe the project to the board, this is an aerial view. Orfield Middle School is in the, is in the middle of the photograph. Lime Kiln Road is to the bottom or the south of the, of the school and Stadium Drive, running up towards the stadium. The property that the op center is being developed is just to the right of Stadium Drive there with the arrow. It's the kind of long, narrow parcel. It's about 8.7 acres in size. And right currently now, it's mainly undeveloped. There's a couple of small outbuildings and sheds towards the bottom of the property, but it's largely undeveloped. There's a fairly steep slope from the top to the bottom. It's a little bit higher, and then drops down as it heads towards Lime Kiln Road. So there's some elevation difference that we had to take into account. On the next slide is just a kind of an overview site plan. This is the property. It's rotated 90 degrees, so north is to the right. But essentially, the building is a two-story building in the middle of the property. There's a small parking lot to the north of the building. It's going to be on the upper level for the offices on the upper level. And then a parking lot on the south side of the building. That's mainly for the operations portion of the building that will be on the lower side. Next slide, you know, there's going to be some stormwater management facilities underneath the lower parking lot, stone beds, and then a larger detention basin on the left side of the plan. They're right at the intersection of Stadium and Lime Kiln. Next slide, this is kind of a rendering of the, of the building. So this is kind of looking on the upper side, on the upper parking lot into the upper floor of the, of the building. The upper floor is mainly going to be the offices. It's going to house, it's where the registration is going to take place, house the offices for technology, school services, food services, and all the operations portion of the building. So this is the upper lot that will go into the main entrance of the upper floor of the building. Next slide. This is a view on the south side of the building looking north. So this is, you can kind of see, you know, as you come down, down the property, this is going to be the lower side of the, of the, of the facility. And this is going to be the entrance into the, really the operations portion of the building, which is the lower floor. So you see, you know, a loading dock there. And then the, and then the lower portion of the building is going to be for the, mainly for the operations part of the building. Storage, storage for, you know, information technology, storing for, you know, mechanical and all the, the operations. Food storage will be there. There'll be a freezer in the basement for the, for all the frozen foods for distribution throughout the district. So this is really a consolidation of the operations throughout the district. A lot of it is housed in a structural building now that's going to be closed. Some of them, information technology spread out through different buildings in the district. And really, this is a consolidation of all those operations in their one central, in their own central area. And this is a view from Stadium looking, you know, west elevation, looking to the east of the building. And you can kind of see how it steps down as you, as you move down, down the site. If you want to, these are, I do have some floor plans. I can get into it now. I know you have a busy meeting, so I'll kind of skip the floor plan. I kind of described what's in the building. If you have any questions about the floor plan, I can, you know, have Ryan from MKSD Architects up, up here and go over it with you if you'd like that. Next slide. So I, you know, we've gone through with the planning commission and worked out a lot of the, the issues. I think there's one or two, as Greg mentioned, that we have to fine tune the conditions. And we will certainly work with, work with staff and your consultants to, to work that over the next couple of weeks and come back at the next meeting, hopefully for, for an approval request. But the one item we did want to discuss with the board tonight is we did ask for a waiver from frontage improvements for this, for this project. The ordinance obviously requires frontage improvements, curving sidewalk, those types of improvements along, all along Stadium Drive. And we have, and you can kind of see the, the red line there kind of wraps around short distance on Lime Kiln. We are proposing to provide the frontage improvements from essentially the green line along Stadium Drive, which is where the, the first entrance into the new facility is going to be, kind of right across from, from Warfield Middle School there. And we're going to be doing all those improvements as part of this. The parking lots on the, on the op center are going to be used as overflow parking for the stadium, for events, football games, those type of things. And that's obviously going to be off-hours for the op center. So we have, you know, eighty-some parking spaces that we can use for, for parking. So we're going to provide, you know, all the access up along Stadium and, you know, crosswalks and everything to be able to get people to, over to the stadium. However, we are asking for a deferral on the sidewalk from that point to the south, essentially where the red frontage labels are. And we're asking for that deferral because as you can kind of see, and I have another slide or two after this, but there's really no sidewalks anywhere to the south. And in fact, Lime Kiln Road is really, is pretty tight and narrow. You know, it's maybe 10-foot lanes each way. And then there's slopes that come right down to, I have a couple photographs of that. And we just, the, the district has concerns that we really don't want to create a, a kind of an attractive nuisance for the kids to go south from, from Warfield or during football games or anything like that. We don't really want to create an invitation for them to, to head in that direction. And we understand the position from the planning commission that generally you're not in the, you know, granting waivers and deferrals for those types of improvements. And I believe the planning commission did recommend not to have that done. I think it was four to three vote. But we just wanted to come to the board and kind of get your feeling on, on that. We certainly would, we have, we don't want to ask for a waiver. We're fine with a deferral. If Lime Kiln is ever upgraded, you know, if the turnpike comes through and the, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with the bridge going underneath the turnpike there. It's, it's very narrow. I have a picture of that later too. I mean, this is the, this is a picture of that intersection, Stadium Drive going up to the left there and Lime Kiln's off to the right. So that's kind of what, what it looks like. And the next slide is a little bit further down Lime Kiln. You can kind of see how narrow the road is. And it's, there's really, you know, on our side, which is the left side, there's a pretty steep bank coming up from it. There's really limited room to even put a, put a sidewalk. And then as you go further down Lime Kiln, which is the next slide, you know, that's the bridge going under the, the turnpike. It's about 20 feet wide. There's, you know, there's not even any shoulder or anything there. You can kind of see how steep the slope is coming down. So we, we really don't want to come around the corner on Lime Kiln and, and stop the sidewalk. And then they basically are right up on the, you know, essentially up, up against the, the travel lane of Lime Kiln. So if the turnpike ever comes through and upgrades that bridge, which I imagine they're going to be, we'll, we'll be doing that at some point. Oh, if Lime Kiln is ever widened, we have no problem having a deferral and putting it in when the time comes. But we prefer to not do that right now. And it's really not financial or anything. It's just really for the safety of the kids from, from Warfield Middle School and, you know, when they do have events. That's really the only issue that we have. The other, the other reviews and everything are all will complies. And there's very little at this point we have, you know, dimensions. I think we can, you know, come back and ask for the approval next, next month. We wanted at least get your, your feedback here. So if you're in favor of it, that waiver will be included in the resolution, or deferral, I should say, will be included in the resolution next month. If you're not in favor of it, we will, we'll withdraw the request and, and install it. But we just want to at least run it by you at this meeting to be able to get everything clean for, for next month.
Thank you. Is there any other staff input or anything from the engineer or from our township manager at this time?
Good, none at this time.
I just had one question. The softball field that's shown on, on the aerial here, is that a game field? Or is that just a practice field?
Game field. It's a game field.
So I'm just wondering if people are going to be parking at the operations center and at least want to get to that field? Be a sidewalk. Is, I'm just kind of throwing ideas out there.
I think it would probably be unlikely. I think there's enough parking for, for games on that field. I think really the overflow parking is needed for mainly football games. I think that, you know, the, the parking availability, you know, you have, you have that large lot to the left of the, of the field. I don't, I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, there's really not a parking issue other than football games.
I just have a quick question. On, on this slide, the green line, if you, if you go to the right of that, that's where the, at the operations center is going to be placed?
That, that's correct. Yeah, if you go back maybe a couple of slides.
Okay, that, go back to the one, yeah, I wanted to see, okay, this one here.
Yeah, so, so that's, yeah, so that, that first driveway, that is, you can kind of see that the two driveways going into, into Warfield Middle School. So it's kind of right in between the two existing driveways going into middle school. That's kind of the, the first driveway coming into that lower parking lot. So essentially, everything to the right of that driveway is going to be improved. That's going to get the sidewalk and everything coming up along from, from that driveway north is all going to get improved. We're just asking for that driveway to this, to this south.
When you say improve north, how far north are you going to improve?
It's, it's going to go all the way up to the end of the property, which is essentially right, that, that's right, right there is where the curve starts on Stadium.
Isn't the end of the property though Warfield Road?
No, that, that, the, the property ends right about where the, where the walkway to the stadium exists.
Okay, but if you kept going further north on Stadium, you have the, the curve. And you go down over the hill where they parked the cars, went to football games on both sides of the grass, is that not Parkland property?
I don't think.
That is Parkland property, but it's not part of this parcel, I believe.
Okay. So there's no discussion as far as sidewalks in that area?
Not as a part of this parcel.
Okay.
The sidewalk's going to go up all the way just about to where this property ends. And right across the street is, is the McCattan walkway that heads to the, to the south side of the stadium. So it's going to come up the sidewalk, there's going to be a crosswalk, and it's going to tie right into the existing McCattan path that goes to the stadium.
I have a comment and a, a question. I think on the request for the sidewalk deferrals, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would certainly entertain a motion to table that for now. Give the staff a little bit more time to review it and then come back to us with their recommendation. Helps us make a, a more informed decision as opposed to making a decision on the spot tonight. And my second question is, so you will be, if you could go back to the slide with the green and the red, you know, what you prefer to, to make in terms of frontage improvements. So if you're going to be adding curbing sidewalks from the green all the way up, anyone that's ever been to a, a football game knows that that's a common area to park. There tends to be a lot of cars densely packed in, in that area. So obviously, if you, you know, if you're adding curbing and sidewalk, it almost renders that, that area not usable for parking. And I know you said you were adding spots. I can see on the, the plans for the operations center, you'll be adding spots that can be used for football games. But my question is, will it be enough? Because on, you know, on a popular Friday night football game in the fall, that whole, the whole parcel, anything that's parkable on it is packed. So is, is that going to force people to be, you know, parking on, right on either side of Stadium Drive? Is it going to force people to park elsewhere? I mean, it, it gets packed on a Friday night. And, and if you make those road improvements, which I would be, of course, in favor of, does it render that whole part of the parcel useless for, for parking? And it would just be open and accessible grass?
Yeah, I, I think the, the idea was just to provide the, the formal parking. You know, I think between the, the two lots, I think there's 20, 28 spaces on the upper lot and 60-some spaces on the, on the lower lot. So we're, we believe that, you know, that the parking that takes place there now will be made up with, with the, the formal parking space.
I just, I hope it's enough because 80 cars is a lot, but it's, it's full on a, on a Friday night in the fall.
Just to add a little bit to that, I think one of the things that went into consideration, you get a rainy football game, people parking in their cars get stuck, they're dragging mud out on the street. With us having formal parking and parking, it'll alleviate that. Even if we lose a few spaces and it creates on a Friday night more parking over on the softball. That softball field is largely unused. I think at this time, this is.
If there's no other board comment at this time, Commissioner Roth, thank you for your suggestion to table this issue. We've certainly been presented with a great deal of information tonight that I would appreciate staff's input on over time before our next meeting is. I will make that motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
I think it might be fair for the applicant to also mention that either some members of our board or all members of the board would probably do a site visit as well just to make sure that we're, we understand everything, you know, that you're asking for, how it all fits together.
We certainly appreciate your time and that's.
Gives us time to do our homework.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to motions. Agenda item 9A, we have a motion authorizing the township manager to execute PFM Asset Management LLC proposal for the purpose of performing calculations relating to the rebate requirements contained in Section 148F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. And I'll turn this over to Towne Petrucci.
Thank you. So what, what this agreement is accomplishing or what this consultant is going to accomplish is related to the township's public bond. So basically, PFM will calculate the amount of rebate viability with respect to the bonds as of the end of each bond year and as of the final maturity of the, the 2021 general obligation bond. This is in compliance with relevant IRS regulations. So we would like to start this process as soon as possible to get it going for this year. So the cost for this year's services to, to conduct the, the arbitrage review would be $11,480. And then if money has not been expended by the end of this year in complete amounts for the bond, it would then, subsequent years, the, the cost would be $1,500. So we do have budget available for this under contract, contracted services for finance. That line, line item has a total of $50,000. We have determined that there's money or room in that line item to conduct this work. The thought process is that I'd rather get this done now so that when we do expend all the remaining funds, that we can then close out our obligations for this, for this federal requirement as soon as possible. The longer we wait, the more, the more, there's a chance of, of records not being as, as timely and not having the information that we need. We are going back to November 2021. So I'd rather close it out and start fresh as soon as the, the bond is completely closed out.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions on this motion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? There are a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, excuse me, five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 9B. We have a motion to proceed with requests for proposals entitled South Whitehall Township Professional Engineering Consulting Services for Cover Bridge Park Development Phase C Selection of Design Consultant. I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you. This RFP would be for the, the Covered Bridge Phase C DCNR grant that was awarded to the township in September of 2022. So under the provisions of the grant, the township must select a design consultant. The amount of the award of the grant was $98,300 with a $98,300 matching funds requirement for the township. The township had submitted the grant back in April of 2022. The intent of the RFP, which would be put on the, the pen bid system, would be to hire a professional planning consultant for the purpose of completing the following scope of work. Well, I'm sorry, the engineering and design phase of the following scope of work. Further development of Cover Bridge Park, work to include construction of a pavilion, ADA access landscaping, project sign, and other related site improvements. Due to the fact that a portion of this project is in a floodway, we feel it's necessary to have a consultant onboard that would understand all of the requirements. The due date for the grant for completion of all of the items is December 31st, 2026. We'd like to see what comes back in terms of proposals to complete this engineering work and then review it and make a recommendation to the board. Any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Are there any board comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, anything from the public? Okay, do we have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 9C. We have a motion to proceed with requesting of qualifications and statements of interest from local firms for the purpose of providing construction inspection services for the construction of segments 41 through 45 for the Jordan Creek Greenway project. Tom?
Thank you. So as the board is aware, the township has received $1 million in funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program to construct segments 41 to 45 of the Jordan Creek Greenway, which is from Lap Road to Weir, Weir Mill Road in Cover Bridge Park. That includes ADA crossings in connection with the existing section of trail to the west of Weir Mill Road. We are currently tracking to prepare the overall public bid in October of 2023 with construction starting in early '24. Thirty, third-party inspection services. Thirty third-party inspection services are required on-site during construction due to the provisions of the PennDOT TASSA grant. We are also required to have these services under contract prior to release of the construction bid. We have confirmed with the grant project commit coordinator that the township would need to request qualifications and statements of interest from prospective firms to provide third-party construction inspect and services for this project. Once we send out the statement of interest or once we've received them, the township will make a recommendation to PennDOT for a firm based on qualifications. After PennDOT has approved the recommended firm, price proposals will be submitted. So at this point, we're asking for approval of the Board of Commissioners to request qualifications and statements of interest from local firms, and then we'll come back to you to 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 make the final selection of the firm.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this motion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 9D, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with advertising of bid regarding line striping and pavement markings project. I'll turn it over to our Director of Operations, Herb Bender.
Thank you. Line striping and pavement markings are used throughout the township each year for intersections, crosswalks and along roadways for traffic control. These materials and services are bid as a cooperative bid on behalf of the LV CPC with several municipalities participating, which helps in keeping the price low. Lower McConge Township was previously the lead agency, but no longer wishes to participate and manage this bid. Previous years, Lower McConge put this bid out as a paper in-person bid with the same company responding and being awarded the contract year after year. We feel by the township using Penn bid as the bidding platform, this bid will be seen by broader base, therefore having better, more competitive results. On behalf of South Whitehall Township Purchasing and Public Works Departments, we are requesting permission to advertise the above above reference bid.
Thank you, Herb. Is there any board discussion on this motion? Any public comment?
Sorry.
I have a question.
To you. Yeah. Can you just clarify how this works for me? There's other municipalities that are participating, but when the contractor is awarded the bid, is that for all those municipalities or just for us?
For all of them.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And we have to list our quantities for our township and then all the other municipalities also list their quantities. And so all that's factored into the bid award.
Yeah, I do have the list here if you do want to know who is on the bid with us. It is Bethlehem Township, City of Allentown, East Allen Township, Forks Township, Lehigh Township, Lower Salkin Township, Palmer Township, Salisbury Township, Upper McConge Township, Upper Salkin Township, Washington Township, Northampton County and Whitehall Township.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Any other board comment or question? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On Agenda Item 9E, we have a motion requesting permission to award bid with regard to the roadway asphalt milling project bid number 2023-01, and I'll call on Herb again to present.
Thank you. Five bids have been received and opened on Thursday, March 9 of 2023 for the roadway asphalt milling project. This bid was advertised twice in local publication as required by law. Thirty-eight potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the Penn bid website. This project was previously requested and approved to be advertised by the Board of Commissioners at the February 15, 2023 meeting as part of the yearly roadway resurfacing schedule for various roads within the township. Capital funds out of liquid fuels has been approved in the 2023 budget line for $205,000. As you can see in the attached bid tabulation, the cost of the milling is $169,069.42. Will have a significant savings to the township. Public Works and Purchasing Departments are respectfully requesting the board to award the contract for this project to Rodomil Inc. The township has contracted with Rodomil Inc. previously with a satisfactory experience with their performance. So with Rodomil, they have done all our milling since we have brought the paving back in-house. So they do do a great job.
That's excellent, and it's nice to see it come in that much under bid, Herb. Thank you. Any board comment or question?
Just one other thing, just so you know, we didn't just pick 205,000 randomly out of a hat when we did this. If you look at the tabulation sheet, we 205,000 out of three out of the five bids would have been right on pace. So we took what Rodomil charged us last year, added a little increase, figuring it would have went up. This is actually more paving and they brought their price down for us. So it actually worked in our favor.
Oh, that's fantastic, Herb. Thank you for that explanation. Did you have a comment, Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, I'm glad that we have an existing relationship with them and we know their work. So thank you very much.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 9F, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with fuel system upgrades. Turn that over to Herb again.
Yes. Public Works is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the upgrades to the fuel system. This will be a joint project with Boyko Petroleum Services and the Public Works Department. Boyko will be removing and replacing a total of seven manholes that are no longer in compliance. Public Works will do the excavation of the concrete and will replace the concrete with township forces. This will bring us back into compliance with the federal, state and local regulations. Motion by, we are asking for a motion by the Board of Commissioners to proceed with the fuel system upgrades. This was budgeted in property improvements for $11,675. So we are right on the penny to get the work completed.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Any board comment or questions on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Onto Agenda Item 9G, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with repairs to the Winchester Heights tennis courts.
Yes, Public Works, along with the Park and Recs Department, is respectfully asking permission to move forward with the repairs to Winchester Heights tennis courts. We have called or emailed six companies. We would like to move forward with pavement pavement maintenance contractors, Inc. They will be fixing all the cracks and resetting the poles along with resealing the entire courts and dual striping them for tennis and for pickleball. The total price for this work is $41,920. We also solicited three quotes for new fencing around the court and would like to move forward with anchor fence for $16,695. The total for this project is $58,615. The action we're requesting is the motion by the Board of Commissioners to proceed with pavement maintenance contractors and anchored fence. This was budgeted in Parks and Rec Property Improvements for $90,000. So we will be under budget by $31,385. And what we are going to see is if we have to do any sound maintenance over there for the pickleball, because that does make more noise than tennis. There are, there is a house not too close to it, so we want to see if we have to do that measure, but getting this pricing back does give us that opportunity to be able to put that in if we have to.
Excellent, Herb. Thank you. Thank you for your sensitivity to the neighbors with bringing pickleball into that particular area. Are there any board comments or questions on this agenda item?
My only comment is I've I've heard several times of people ask me when we're getting pickleball. So this is a a much needed improvement and also the just the current condition of the courts I know is deteriorating. So a great improvement and just let us know if we get any resident feedback about the noise. I know that's been a concern in other areas, so just keep us updated.
Sure. And once we have talked to the contractors, once we have the POs created, they will get us in their schedule and we will report back when that project will actually start.
Very good, Herb. Thank you. There's no other board comment. Is there any public comment? Do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 9H, we have a motion to proceed with execution of Hills at Winchester amendments to subdivision improvements agreement, and I'll turn this over to Tom Petrucci.
Thank you. Official action is requested in the form of a motion to authorize the President of the Board of Commissioners to execute three amendments to the existing subdivision improvements agreements for phases one, two and three for the Hills at Winchester subdivision. The existing subdivision improvements agreements have technically elapsed. That's however, that does not relieve the developer from the requirement of completing said improvements. The proposed amendments to the subdivision improvements agreements would give the applicant an additional two years of time to complete the related improvements. However, staff and I have worked out an agreement with the developer as well as with assistance from the alternate solicitor Lisa Pereira to ensure that a summary of expected completion timeline has been incorporated into to the extension to to said agreements. So the summary of completion would be as follows. And this is all projected, of course. Complete construction of last home spring of 2023. Complete basin conversion summer 2023. Dedication punches would be issued by the township in May 2023, and then the developer would finish the punch list in the summer. And the top pave, which would be conditioned upon the completion of said punch lists, the basin conversion and as built being provided would be completed in the late fall of 2023. However, if that would be contingent upon temperatures being conducive to paving, otherwise it would be in the spring or summer of 2024.
Very good, Tom. This summary of the expected dates, is that more of a guideline and not set in stone for them to meet those particular milestones?
Yes, the the intent was not to just simply give an initial amount of time and not set some type of established parameter. So we're we're trying to expedite the completion of the project while still giving the developer sufficient time to complete the work.
That's very good to hear. Thank you. Any board comments on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Correspondence and Information. I'll turn it back over to Tom. Review upcoming meetings.
Thank you. The upcoming meetings are as follows. Monday, April 10, 7:00 PM, Parks and Recreation Board. However, I believe that may be canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Tuesday, April 11, 6:00 PM, would be a Crime Watch meeting. Wednesday, April 12, sorry, 10:00 AM, Civil Service Commission. Monday, April 17, 6:00 PM, Green Advisory Council. Please check the township website for any details. The meetings, unless otherwise specified, are held here at the Township Building. I would like to highlight the fact that we have one vacancy on the Planning Commission and the applications are due by by this month on the 14th.
Very good, Tom. Thank you. So anyone interested in applying can go to our website for information. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Direction Discussion Items. We have three topics for discussion this evening. First is PennDOT Vulnerable Road Users VRU Tier One Pedestrian Signal Indications Upgrades. Tommy, presenting that one?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Thank you.
I wanted to update the board on the fact that Herb Bender and I are working with the state as well as traffic planning and design and L and V engineering as well as Jacob Solutions in assisting or working on a pilot program to install pedestrian signal indications and push buttons at intersections within the township. So this is a newer program that PennDOT is is working on. It's called the Vulnerable Road Users Tier One Pedestrian Upgrade Project. And we've identified four intersections where installing the upgrades would would be beneficial to the township and pedestrian safety. And these are as follows, Walbert Avenue and Ridgeview Drive, Walbert Avenue and Springhouse Road, Hamilton Boulevard and Haynes Mill Road, Cedar Crest Boulevard and Office Center Road. The these intersections already have existing crosswalks, so we wouldn't have to install new ones. PennDOT is trying to move through the design phase rather quickly. So they are looking to, the next step would be that they would be providing us design plans. And then the board would have to approve a resolution for the amendment to to the signalized intersection plans. I just wanted to keep you up to date on this project. It's happening at no cost to the township, so Herb Bender and I view this as an upgrade without without needing any township expenditure funds, which is which is always good. So unless there's any questions or comments or or any issues with this approach, you know, we'd like to proceed and then we'll be, like I said, we'll be circling back with you for an approval of the the necessary resolution.
Excellent. This is exciting. Certainly good to hear that it's no cost to the township and certainly anytime we can add safety measures in for pedestrians is always a win for our community. So thank you for bringing this to us. Keep us up to date.
You're quite welcome.
Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I just wanted to understand what what criteria may you have used to identify these four intersections? And in obviously by exclusion eliminated others?
Well, we are going with PennDOT's recommendations. So it was based on basically just the lack of these existing features as it is now. And just making sure that we're providing a safe crosswalk for for the users there.
Okay, so this this is for PennDOT roads only then, this program?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. And it's also based on the ADT. So these roads have higher ADT levels.
What's ADT?
Average daily traffic. Sorry.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you.
So it's PennDOT's money, so we're we're taking their recommendations.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Moving on to Direction Item B, Act 537 Plan Update.
I will take that. Thank you. All right. So no actions being requested tonight. So Herb and I wanted to just update you that with the adoption of the 2023 South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Plan, the township can now begin to proceed with the process to update our Act 537 official plan. So the Act 537 Official Plan guides our sewage disposal needs across the township. So we are going to work on updating the plan in accordance with DEP guidelines, including following the plan content and environmental assessment checklist, which I did provide to the board for reference. Prior to executing any agreement with a professional services consultant to assist the township and provide the necessary technical guidance, plans, analysis, documentation, data and reports that are required to complete the plan, it is necessary for the township to meet with Scott Navacnack, who is the planning chief for the DEP. We need to finalize the scope of the work relative to the township's Act 537 Official Plan. We must memorialize that scope of work in what DEP calls its Task Activity Report or ATAR. So it lists all planning activities to be completed. And it is a regulatory compliant for eventual planning of grant eligibility if funding is allocated. However, with respect to grant funding from the state, I want to be clear that that is almost next to impossible to to obtain due to the fact that no grant funding has been allocated for at least over a decade. I think it's closer to 12 years, 14 years. So the chances of receiving grant reimbursement for this are pretty pretty next to nil. However, we do have budgeted $120,000 for this project in the 2023 budget. But we want to make sure that our TAR, our Task Activity Report, aligns with the contract with that we signed with the consultant so that we're not adding in any superfluous activities that we don't need to complete. So we will be circling back with you for approval of the contract for the Act 537 Plan after we complete that that pre-application meeting.
Very good, Tom.
Tom, just one thing. I did speak with Scott Navacnack's Tom, just one thing. I did speak with Scott Navatnik's secretary today. We are tentatively in for April 17th at 10:00 AM to meet with them to get this rolling. So he's going to be in the office tomorrow. Again, he's going to look at it, approve it, and then we'll be set in stone to meet.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for keeping the board updated.
Thank you.
Any board comments or questions? Any from the public? Okay, and then on to direction item C, Resource Protection for Open Space and Historical Plan.
Dave Manhart.
Dave Manhart, our Director of Community Development.
Let me just get everything teed up here. So with the recent adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, we can start looking at implementation items. One of the things that we came across during the process and with recent conversations with residents is that the importance for resource protection. There were several implementation items that were wrapped around resource protection. One of the things that we discovered during the process was that when all of everything overlaps, there is an opportunity to preserve what we're referring to as a landscape. So the context of a historic structure in the context of farmland or a floodway in context with farmland. So there's these combinations that are important, and that's kind of what we're thinking of for the landscape. So what we've done is we've kind of combined five of the implementation items into one plan. I've included those implementation items in the packet. Just get to. So and then we also included an outline of what this plan would potentially look like. And the first thing we we laid out is a potential public engagement process. So we were successful in running these for the comp plan using subject matter experts and focusing in on specific topic areas. So the idea is to have an introductory meeting where we explore, you know, what is open space, what's important about it? And then after that meeting, staff will synthesize and prepare for the expert, subject matter expert meetings where we present more specifics. So there would be three workshop meetings for one for natural resources, one for historic resources, and one for agricultural resources. In those, we get into more of the nitty gritty of preservation options, methods of preservation, priorities, that kind of information. And then we come back as staff, synthesize all of that into a final plan, draft final plan, and present that at a concluding meeting. So that kind of lays out the process. And really, tonight, we wanted to run this by the board to see that we're heading down the right path before we get started. One of the things that you may notice in in the outline is a lot of this was completed as part of the Comprehensive Plan Update. So we have a lot of information prepared already. And also, we like to do things as much as we can in-house. So the intent is we have the technical expertise in-house to do GIS analysis, preparation of the plan. The idea is to bring in subject matter experts that we can focus our attention on what they're experts in. We've been in conversations with a the former director of the Heritage Conservancy, which is an organization down in Boylstown in Bucks County. I had reached out to them during the Comprehensive Plan process to get an idea of how to handle historic resources. They are, that agency is very good at preserving historic structures and open space. So I think, and Jeff Marshall, who we've been in conversations with, has over 40 years' experience in that realm. So the idea is, we haven't come to any agreements or anything, but the idea is to bring him in kind of as an advisor through this process. As kind of the overall advisor and then also the historic resources. They manage a historic building. And that's kind of what directed me to call them is because they not only preserve the building, but they're actually operating the building for weddings and things like that. So having that insight on how to get things done, how to manage properties and things like that, I think is very valuable. Wanted to throw that information out to the board and get a get feedback on whether we're heading in the right direction. And if we are, we can certainly get started.
Thank you, Dave. It's exciting to be talking about next steps as quickly as we are considering the comp plan was just adopted.
We've been waiting.
Thank you for bringing this to the board so quickly. One of the things that came to my mind when I reviewed the information you included in the packet was potential to include other municipalities who have had a successful open space historic program that's in place that we might learn from. I didn't see anything here. I know this is not a complete list, but that's what I thought of. Might be helpful to bring in people who have been through it and give us some insight.
Yeah, that's exactly why Jeff Marshall is the guy. He's been 40 years of it. He did a lot with, I think he wrote a book on preserving barns. He's very well experienced in in that aspect. And I think getting somebody from that has the experience of operating buildings is going to help us understand how, things that we can do to keep buildings occupied. Because when they're not occupied, that's when they fall into disrepair. So I think. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just have two comments. First of all, I like the framework. Think it's a great start. For that fourth meeting, agriculture resources under potential experts, I'm listed Lehigh County Agriculture. Not sure if that's what you're referring to, but the Lehigh County Farmland Preservation Board?
Yes.
Which has municipal county representation.
Yes.
Always a great resource. And then for historic resources, if there was to be a meeting, certainly we have a preliminary list of potential resources in the adopted Comprehensive Plan.
We have a bigger list.
That's great, but if you could potentially look at ensuring that resource owners are included in an invite to that meeting. People who own historic resources may be vested in trying to preserve them, be very passionate about, you know, what they own and how they can contribute to the community. So making sure that they're made aware they can attend, maybe provide information as well as contribute to the path forward. That was my major comment on that.
One of, and I don't know if it's going to happen during this, but one of the things that we've come across is how much information longtime residents have and the stories that they can tell. And the preserving of the stories is an important aspect of it. And this plan may point to methods and ways that we can engage in more detail as we go down that that road.
Yeah, because I think, obviously, like you mentioned, barns, homes, those are the most visible signs, but knowledge is also very powerful and in a way to preserve knowledge. You don't always see it, but there there are certainly ways to accomplish that. So all good things to consider.
Dave, I think it's excellent. Thank you so much for your work on this. I'm excited about it. Roth, you had some great ideas there about including property owners and also working with the county, Lehigh County. I mean, our Lehigh County Commissioner, Ron Beitler, is big with preservation as well. I think he could be a really good resource. So thank you for that. Thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
Dave, are these meetings going to be public or private?
Yes, the intent will probably notice them as joint meetings so that everybody can attend. Kind of like how we did the the joint workshops. But I think we'll set them up with tables. So it's more engaging and less of the presentation part of it.
Okay, so we would get advanced notice then of the meeting?
We will be reaching out to you to schedule those meetings.
Excellent. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Thank you again, Dave. Look forward to the next steps. Moving on to agenda item 12, old business. We have nothing listed this evening. Back to courtesy of the floor. Again, we have an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there anyone online, Dave? Any comments? Okay. Very good. Moving on to agenda item 14, department reports. These are our quarterly reports from our township departments. So I'll begin at the top with our executive department and ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to give us your report.
Thank you. I'll just provide an overview of the of the key highlights, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right. So, you know, I've been attending biweekly department head meetings, weekly agenda meetings with department heads, public meetings as required and and on an as-needed basis for all committees and commissions of the board and all other ancillary committees. This this during this quarter, we accomplished a longstanding personnel goal for the township. We were able to hire a human resources generalist. And she actually started this past Monday, so we're very pleased about that. We interviewed probably close to 30 people. That's no exaggeration. So we're very happy with her qualifications and we're happy to have her on board. And we'll introduce you to her at a subsequent township meeting formally. Basically, we've, you know, I've also met in conjunction with Herb Bender with with the new state senators, Jared Coleman and Nick Miller, to communicate an overview of the ongoing issues and needs relative to the South Whitehall Township local government and overall committee. We've already commenced our weekly budget meetings for the 2024 budget. So we can start realizing the the goals that we're setting forth for for the preparation of that budget. With Herb, I attended a lead-in copper pipe Pennsylvania DEP seminar for the new requirements that are taking effect. Been reviewing all of the ongoing pending grant applications with staff as well as officials of the Commonwealth to ensure we're meeting the requirements from a project management standpoint, some of which, you know, we highlighted tonight. Worked with the chief of police on administrative requirements. Resolved ongoing issues, some of which were related to the Jordan Creek Greenway project as well as the traffic congestion issue with the collection of solid waste and recycling along 309. We worked with the police on that. We did complete the RCN cable franchise fee audit, which was was an outstanding issue. We've now implemented the use of Microsoft Project for department heads to streamline the project management process, which is being is being used in advance of the implementation phase for the Comprehensive Plan. We're working on the solid waste task or the solid waste task force is working on the new contract. So we'll have that to you shortly. Lynette Roaming and CD, Community Development, developed a new resident packet, which will be posted on the township website very shortly. She did an excellent job on that. Was in constant, or not constant, but we facilitated a contract change with the Police Department Union. Been working with the IT provider to attempt to consolidate our services wherever feasible. That's more of a recent project. We work together collectively with Community Development to submit all of our projects for the long-range transportation plan for the review and consideration of LBC, LVPC, and LVTSS. We've had a lot of meetings with Lehigh County Authority officials, as well as our own consultants and employees to try to resolve some of the various ongoing concerns related to our sewer infrastructure and Klein's Island. And multiple zoning ordinance amendments and general ordinance amendments that that have been coming out of CD as as well. So we've been busy at the executive level. And, you know, I want to thank all the department heads for all the work that they do, as well as all the staff in achieving everything we've been able to do this year this this year thus far.
Excellent, Tom. Thank you. Thank you for your communication with the board and keeping us updated on a regular basis. We appreciate your leadership of of our board as well. Moving on to Community Development Department, I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
Yes, so I can go through pretty briefly. The Comprehensive Plan has been adopted. Oh, that's big news. So that really brings us into the next phase where we can start implementing. We talked about the five items with the Landscape Preservation Plan, the Act 1537. The 537 Plan is another one. So we're starting to get the ball rolling on a lot of this stuff. And there's been a lot of work done in the background for the Comprehensive Plan that is going to help with the 537 Plan. So there's some integration there. Boards and commissions. Planning Commission's been busy. We've seen, there's a list in the packet. A lot of the projects have been at the boards, at the planning commission multiple times. So that shows up in in that packet. And then also some ordinances that they've been working on that the boards directed the planning commission to look at. The zoning hearing board has been busy with the Moyer Construction LLC appeal. There's been four hearings on that. They're scheduled for the next hearing, April 17th. So that'll be where the hearing officer renders his decision and the other board members vote. The other application was for PATA property, which is over here on church. They just needed an extension. Permit, so we handle all the building permits in the Community Development Department. That's included in the report. Since we've been able to standardize the data, I can start comparing it to previous years. So compared to the first quarter last year, we're actually down in residential alterations or additions, and we're down in new homes. So that's particularly because the regency is getting close or is at the end. So we're starting to catch up. Non-residential, we're also down compared to the last last year's first quarter. Kind of a similar time of year, I think. Things have slowed down a little bit, but we're starting to see as things go through the planning process, we're going to start seeing all these projects go through the construction process. We also look at, we process public works permits, a right-of-way permit, construction water and subdivision, so sewer and water tapping. We've kind of implemented a new process for tapping and allocation so that we're able to track it better using our munis system. So the the numbers may be all slightly skewed there. And then enforcement, typically the first quarter is pretty quiet. So it hasn't been very busy. So it hasn't been very busy with regards to that. And that's it.
Very good, Dave. Thank you. Moving on to Fire Departments. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to report on the State of Greenawalt's Fire Department. My name is Sean Peichel. I'm the Engine Company Lieutenant at Greenawalt's. The first quarter of 2023 has been operationally busy for us so far. I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight some of the accomplishments, as well as the things we look forward to this year. First, we'll start with our response statistics. The month of 20, in the first three months of 2023, we responded to 157 incidents. That's an average of just under two calls per day, and of those calls, about 19% were fire-related, including eight working fires. 16.5% were emergency medical or rescue calls. 5% were other hazardous conditions calls, and about 43% were fire alarms and false calls. Digging a little deeper into the numbers, across all the call types, we averaged 10.8 members per call. And for high priority incidents, we averaged 15 members per call for reported building fires and 11 members per call for vehicle extracations and other technical rescues. In total, our members have made 1,694 individual responses in the first quarter. Engine 1111 responded on 90 calls, Engine 1112 responded on 57 calls, Rescue 1141 responded on 53 calls, Utility 1191 responded on 42 calls, and our command vehicles collectively made 335 responses. Of these calls, we had a number that were fairly significant. We have recently responded to a number of vehicle extracations, some involving complex vehicles and entanglement concerns. We have also responded to a number of working fires, both in South Whitehall Township, as well as surrounding municipalities, and function in various roles from suppression to search and rescue to rapid intervention. At Greenawalt's, we pride ourselves for being an all-hazard response agency. Basically, when someone has a problem that needs to be solved, we're prepared to solve it. In addition to firefighting, we offer many different specialties, including our licensed QRS service through the PA Department of Health. On our roster, we currently have two physicians, one of which is our medical director, a pre-hospital physician extender, a pre-hospital registered nurse, seven paramedics and 17 EMTs. With that, we respond on many advanced life support calls within our district. We have one member that has enrolled in EMT class and three members that are about to begin their EMR class as well. We are capable of handling rope and high-angle rescues, machinery rescues, confined space rescues, trench rescues, structural collapse rescues, and both static and swift water rescues. We specialize in man and machine rescues for industrial incidents, which had recently led to new response support for several different mutual aid partners. We continue to stay proficient in our bread and butter specialty, which is our Rapid Intervention Team, which is a group of highly trained and experienced rescue firefighters who are called to the scene of working fires all throughout the county to locate and rescue other firefighters who become lost and trapped or run out of air while working. This is a highly coveted responsibility, which we take very seriously and train on continuously. Over the years, these efforts have resulted in a number of rescues and, more importantly, prevent the injury to fellow firefighters. With this large number of responsibilities, our continuing education is incredibly important. Our members have already accumulated over 1,500 hours of training this year so far. Many of our members come almost every Monday night for our weekly drills. And on top of that, we also have a number of members currently enrolled in certification courses, such as two members completing their firefighter one certification, three members completing EMR training, three members completing TECC training, and one member who just completed his EMT. We offer a variety of advanced training courses and drills, including engine company operations, vehicle extrication, rope rescue, active shooter rescue task force training, forcible entry, search and rescue, emergency medical continuing education, emergency vehicle operations, water rescue, machine and heavy equipment rescue, and rapid intervention training. We've continued to grow our membership. We currently have over 80 members on the roster who engage in our fire and rescue operations, including five new members already this year. Vision and direction of the department is provided by our dedicated officer staff, consisting of our chief, deputy chief, assistant chief, three battalion chiefs and three captains, along with our two lieutenants. We continue to retain our members by training hard, providing mentorship and personal growth opportunities, and also providing a number of social events throughout the year to keep our members and their families engaged. Most recently, we took a group trip to the Phantoms hockey game and have an Iron Pigs game outing, along with our summer picnic schedule. We also have plans for our annual Christmas party and awards banquet in December. We have a number of events for the community planned for this year. The Greenawalt's Fire Department was founded on the tradition of benevolence in our neighborhood and surrounding areas. We believe strongly in not only helping people during emergency situations, but also giving back to the community and providing for them in good times as well. We continue that tradition today and trying to remain a focal point in the fabric of the Village of Greenawalt's. This year, we hosted our annual Easter egg hunt, which is actually coming up this Saturday, April 9th. We will again be hosting a fitness/crossfit workout challenge, along with the members of our community on Memorial Day. Our annual Halloween parade will be hosted in the last weekend of October. Our annual Santa run, where we give Santa a ride around to deliver presents, will be completed in mid-December. In coordination with that, we also work with the Guidance Counselor at Kratzler Elementary to identify several families each year who may need a little extra support during the holiday season. This past year, we adopted three families, and our members and donors purchased gifts for the children and helped fill the needs for the adults. We also supported and donated to several holiday programs being sponsored by the Parkland High School, or I'm sorry, Parkland School District and Kratzler PTO. On top of those events, we continue to assist with many of our community partners with events such as the Dorney Park Fireworks, Michaela's Voice Triathlon for Inclusion, Travis Mannion 5K Heroes Run, trunk retreats at several schools, churches, along with the township, the South Whitehall Tree and Bridge Lighting, the South Whitehall Candy Cane Hunt, the South Whitehall Movies in the Park, the Prepare South Whitehall Emergency Management Event, Touch a Truck with Parkland, I'm sorry, Parkland Library, teaching and facilitating the Science of Firefighting class at the Parkland High School. We also provide vehicle extrication training for all EMT, paramedic and pre-hospital nursing students that come through Lehigh Valley Hospital and Sutroni Ambulance. We provide assistance with fire prevention, education at several schools, churches and daycares. We provide education and support for the South Whitehall Summer Playground Program. We continually entertain a number of Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops visiting the firehouse throughout the year. We have several members who provide training throughout the state and throughout the country, as well as sit on many boards and committees in the local and national fire service. As you can see, there's always something going on at Greenawalt's. We work very diligently to handle the ever-increasing call volume, both in sheer numbers and complexity, as well as maintain a strong presence and engagement with our community. We've built very strong relationships with our mutual aid partners and continue to work on improving our operational capabilities year after year. I've highlighted a lot of what we do, but this is just scratching the surface of the amazing work our men and women do day in and day out. Our membership is an outstanding group, and we pride ourselves on not only developing firefighters, but also developing successful and productive members of society in the multitude of professional careers they pursue. We look forward to seeing what the members of Greenawalt's are able to achieve and where this interesting path will take us in 2023 and beyond. Thank you for all your continued support of our mission that we strive to do to make South Whitehall a safer and better place to work and play.
Wow. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Please extend our thanks to all of your members for all of your service to the township. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Come on, Barry B.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Barry, Chief of Woodlawn Fire Department. Before I get started, and it's going to be brief, Herb and Tom, just for the board, Herb and Tom have been fantastic since Herb took over and with our Fire Commissioner out of service for a while. And since Tom's got here, they've done a fantastic job, and we're progressing. All the departments are progressing quite well with their leadership, and I just want to note that. The Woodlawn Fire Department responded to 184 calls in the first three months of 2023. An average of 13 members responded on each call. Our response and on-scene times are well below the recommended national averages. We are stable with 60 active members, which include firefighters and fire police. Many of the fire police are also cross-trained as firefighters, drivers, cascade operators, QRS assists and rehab specialists. Our fire team has a range of retired firefighters, with the oldest at 75, and high school students with an age of 16 and every age in between. So we have a wide range of ages, which sometimes can be a real challenge. Our volunteers are engaged in training every Monday night, along with special training events during the week, which include extensive driver training programs in order for our firefighters to become qualified on each piece of apparatus. That's apparatus in English and England. Our department hosted a Drive to Survive lecture that stressed the importance of making proper decisions when driving emergency vehicles. We are actively engaged with the Active Shooter TECC Drill, being sponsored by the South Whitehall Emergency Management. Our fire police have been working with our police department in setting up, and the Parkland School District, Tony Naradco, in setting up reunification of students at the high school, closing roads and directing parents for reunification, if hopefully that never has to come about. Our team assisted in the eight-hour trench rescue at Allentown, providing rehab support and on-scene support. The team also assisted in several working fires in Allentown, providing cascade and rehab support services. This year, we have had no change in leadership. Our officers are the officers we had last year. We have added two positions to our operating staff. Joe Cat Mugal, who has moved now to a firefighting position. He's our liaison that will coordinate communications between the chiefs, South Whitehall Police Chief, Woodlawn Fire Police Officers, and also works with Tony Naradco as a safety liaison with the school district. Deb Tice has also taken on an emotional support role that she provides very well at scenes, talking to the people that, whether it be an accident or a house fire, talking to those folks. They would say it's a position that was long overdue, and she does a fantastic job. So Deb has taken on that responsibility. We replaced our, we placed our new Spartan Pumper in service in January, replacing the 1980, 1998 Seagrease Pumper. And we, as a team, are evolving. I know Rich talked about this. The biggest changes we've seen over the years, and yes, I did hit my head twice going out the door, and I think it's stunned my growth, but what a change, what an absolute change in the fire service. We are evolving by taking online courses on new firefighting techniques and new technologies, such as the hazards right now with lithium batteries. It's a big one. And just coming up to date and understanding how a lithium battery can cause all this havoc in warehouses, transportation, and even little skateboards and things like that. So understanding how conventional firefighting techniques do work and how we have to stay up with them. We at Woodlawn looking forward to serving the community in the coming years, and we thank you for your support as a board. You've been fantastic, and we hope to have a great working relationship in the next quarter. Thank you.
Fantastic, Chief Serge. Thank you so much. And again, extend our appreciation to all of your members. It's wonderful to hear all that you're all doing to protect and serve our community. Thank you. Is there anyone here from Sutronia Fire Company tonight? No? Okay. Do we have a report from them online? Nothing?
No.
Not this time? Okay. Just a general thank you to all of our volunteers. You're an integral part of our township, and it's really wonderful to sit and listen quarterly to everything that you all do, so thank you. Moving on to Parks and Recreation Department, ask Lynn Matula, our new Park and Rec Director.
Thank you. Just give a brief overview as well of my report. So the winter programs wrapped up. We had a few successful winter programs. Is that better? Better? I didn't know if it bent. Okay. Thank you. We had the Senior Social Group, which had five or six regular participants. They seemed to really enjoy it. Some really great activities were booked for them, like planting workshop, music therapy and a bingo. The indoor zumba had 21 registrants. The swim and gym averaged about 70 attendees per week. The Intro to Snowshoeing had 23 registrants, and the Adult Whiffle Ball Drop-In League is also very popular with 20 participants each week. We just had the Parkland Area Summer Recreation Camp registration, which, per usual, the sites filled up pretty quickly. We have all three sites full with waitlists. And just to reiterate that, what we do is have a two-week resident priority registration period. So residents have that, the two weeks to register themselves, no non-residents. If there are any spots left over after those two weeks, then non-residents can register for an increased fee. We have a large amount of returning counselors, so that will be nice. And then we've started the new hire process, and we have interviews being scheduled, the first date being April 10th for those. We also streamlined the interview process just a little bit with the packet, hopefully to make the rehires just a little bit simpler, and it seems to be making that process a little bit faster. The spring and summer programs and events are all scheduled and all on their website, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of the big ones that we have coming up. The Youth Fishing Derby, we're really excited about. We were not sure we were going to be able to have this event because we weren't sure we were going to be able to stock the creek. There was an issue with an invasive New Zealand mud snail. So, but we were able to overcome that and get the creek stocked, thanks to staff recommendations and greenwalk trout hatchery. So we've already got 100 kids, plus 100, a little over 100 kids registered for that. And we'll have a prize for the biggest catch. Staff is going to be helping by selling concessions for the event, and all those proceeds will go back to then future recreational programming. We have Earth Day scheduled, so if anybody is looking for volunteer hours or a way to give back, we're doing three basic sites. So Cover Bridge Park will be mulching and planting decorative landscaping. SPYA is also going to come out and help with repainting dugouts and working on the baseball fields. We'll do mulching and planting decorative landscaping at South Whitehall Chase Park as well with the new playground, so we're really excited about that one. And then we've got a group that actually requested to do some roadside cleanup, so they're going to meet at the township building. Fire police will assist with that. Public Works is going to make sure that they're safe as well. So we're excited about that. The registration for that is open on the portal. And just to highlight, the first two larger events, the movies and the concerts. Our first movie will be June 16th, and that's going to be the Top Gun Maverick movie. That is a PG-13 movie, but it was pretty popular, so we're excited about that one. And the first concert will be June 9th at Cover, they're both at Cover Bridge Park, I'm sorry. And that will be the Philly Funk Authority, so they're returning. We're excited about that one as well. And just some general department updates. We have gotten pavilion rentals online. So we did a soft opening in March where we just had them open, and people started, the rental started to kind of trickle in just to make sure we could work out the kinks. That will be officially announced in the newsletter, and that's going well so far. What that does is streamline the administrative portion of that significantly. And then people also have to make their credit card payment before putting the pavilion on hold or reserving it. So that will kind of do away with trying to catch up with people for payments or holds or things like that, so that makes it a lot easier. We already have 61 rentals for the entire season as of now. We worked on the special event application. We streamlined that a little bit, revised it just to make sure that we're getting all the necessary information from the entities that want to use our facilities for events. And then also with the intent of making it a little clearer and user-friendly for those organizations because, you know, having fundraisers, walk runs in our parks, I think is beneficial to the township. The newsletter, we believe, will be in homes by the end of April. And we've also started working on event sponsorship levels or updating the event sponsorship levels, reaching out to our local businesses and organizations. We just want to make sure that they're aware that those exist and that our newsletter has advertisement opportunities for them as well. It's a great way for businesses and organizations to promote their companies while helping their community at the same time. So it's a pretty win-win situation. Our events and newsletters reach a very large audience, so if you're a local business owner, please consider becoming a community partner, and it's a great way to make a positive impact while marketing your business. So, thank you.
Excellent. Lynn, it sounds like you hit the ground running in a short period of time, so thank you for updating us on the changes you're already making in the department, and we look forward to all the programs for the community that you highlighted tonight.
Thank you. I do as well.
Moving on to Public Works, I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
I'm just going to give an oversight also.
I'm just going to give an oversight also, or we could be here forever. I do want to start with that Public Works was awarded two LSA grants, one for $151,000 for the Tiger mower, and one for $25,500 for the new water cor- corollator. So we were just waiting for that paperwork, and then we will get all that ordered. On the water side, Bridgeview Terrace Phase Two, the new water main replacement project that is completed, that's final. The current work on the lead-in copper inventory list we are currently working on, that is due to DEP by, towards the end of 2024. So it's going to be a two-year process for us to try to figure all this out. We have backed all the main valve boxes out, so if we do have any issues with the mains, we can actually get on the valve to turn the system off. All our annual reports to DEP and DRBC are completed. We're working on our CCR report, which is the Consumer Confidence Report for our annual water quality report. On the sewer side, our first round of sewer calibrations is completed. They have all passed this year. We're currently finishing up televising area MS 56. We have rebuilt 20 manholes in MS 56 before the areas get paved. This goes with our sewer reduction plan that had to be turned in for Klein's Island. Instead of outsourcing this work, we actually did it in-house and got it done before the roads get repaved, so we don't have to put cuts in them right away. The Tillman Street Sewer Line relocation, that is on pace to be finished up by the second week of April, so we will meet our deadline with the turnpike also on that project. On the street side, we have started the PRP Pollutant Reduction Plan on Deerfield Detention Basin. They're about a third of the way through it. We should be done in about a week, two weeks at the longest. We resealed any cracks and curb lines from the 2019 paving program to get us the longevity of the roads. We repaired 37 inlets that are on the, the street slits that is going to be repaved in Road milling will start now that it was approved on April 24th, and the township forces will start paving right behind them on the 25th. On the park side, we have started mulching all the parks. You will see we are using the wood chips that we get from grinding the trees up through our chipper instead of purchasing the mulch this year. So we are recycling and reusing it to help keep costs down. The new fence around Deerfield Detention Basin, that has been completed already this year, so that has all brand-new split-rail fence. South Whitehall Chase install for the new playground was supposed to start today, but due to the rain coming tomorrow, we're looking at next week to get it going, not that we start one day and have to stop. All the ball fields have been addressed and are ready for spring ball. The walking bridge at Cover Bridge Park has been power washed and deck boards replaced as needed. On the garage, they're doing the routine maintenance to all the fleet, has taken on helping the fire departments with their fleet repairs also and inspections. They're servicing all the mowers for the upcoming grass cutting season. They're also switching all the trucks over for the upcoming paving season, and they switched the trackless units around for the attachments for the roadside mowing to begin. And that's it.
Wow, that's an incredible amount of work. Thank you for that overview, Herb. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And Police Department, Chief Dorney.
I will try to start in chronological order. Starting off, the beginning of the year, we had two new hires start the Allentown Police Academy on January 3rd to earn their ACT 120 certification and are scheduled to graduate in June to start their field training program. A moment of pride, we have Gina Whirl in the academy. She is the class lieutenant, which is essentially the president of the class in the academy. And Justin Bilka is a class sergeant, who is the second-in-command of the class. So out of all the students in the class, South Whitehall Township has the two leaders in the class. So that's something to be proud of for us. It's a good sign for them moving forward. On February 1st, Stephen Brown was promoted to the rank of captain of administration and overall operations, second-in-command of the department. And Eric Dodder was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in charge of the administration side and criminal investigations. They have both hit the ground running and are working very well together. On February 28th, South Whitehall Police celebrated the graduation of 29 residents from the Second Annual Citizens Police Academy. The residents participated in 10 sessions lasting approximately three hours long, sometimes longer, to earn, to learn more about the law enforcement profession and specifically learn what the South Whitehall Township Police Department does on a daily basis. The next thing we're proud of is the department was awarded a $300,099 grant from PCCD Local Law Enforcement Support Program toward the purchase of body-worn cameras. We've also applied for a small rural and tribal body camera grant, requesting $100,000, and are awaiting award notifications on that. The Lehigh County Consortium test was given on February 27th, and interviews were conducted on March 3rd and 6th. Civil Service Commission certified the entry of the level patrol list, patrol officer list on March 8th, and the BOC adopted that list on March 15th. Originally, three conditional offers, but after tonight, four conditional offers of employment were given, and background investigations have begun. We currently have three vacant positions. We are in full-blown accreditation mode. We are about 99% complete and prepared for our mock assessment later this month, with the final assessment coming in June. So hopefully for the next quarterly report, I will be able to inform you that we have been reaccredited through the Pleak accreditation service. So that is coming soon. Some of the stats for the first quarter of 2023, we handled 4,002 reports, calls for service, which is an increase of 22% compared to 2022. We had 320 criminal offenses compared to 238 last year for a 34% increase. We had 117 arrests compared to 88 for a 33% increase compared to last year. We wrote 493 site, traffic citations for the year, 49% increase compared to last year, and we wrote 1,101,018 written warnings for traffic violations compared to 650 last year for a 57% increase. It shows the officers are out there working hard every single day, and now that, knock on wood, we're over the COVID pandemic, that it has been increasingly gotten busier on the road, and the officers are out there doing the best they can and doing a fantastic job in our community, even though we are short three officers on the road and one on long-term illness that has been out. So they're doing more with less. So very proud of the, the work that the men and women of the department are doing, and we thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you, Chief Dorney. Thank you to all the officers for everything that you do, keeping our community safe. We appreciate you and appreciate your engagement with our community on a regular basis as well. And last but not least, Township Engineer, Tony Talarida.
Thank you. As David said, the new submissions are slowing down a little bit, but most of these projects are going through two to three to four cycles, so we're getting a better look at it. The planning commission's getting a better look. Hopefully, that leads to at least a better result for the township and what projects that are coming in. In terms of the construction, it was a mild winter. There's been sites that have been under construction all winter. It's starting to pick back up. We've also dusted off all of our lists of hanging projects and things that are out there and sent updates to everyone that has been under construction to get schedules and kind of get them going. Hopefully, it won't just keep lingering on throughout the year. Lastly, we also work with township. We did, we updated the mini specs for the township. We will see them for final adoption, and we did the design of that Buck Trail Basin to maintain the MS 4 compliance. So they're in the process of constructing that, but those plans went out. So, so it's how we're just continuing to work.
Excellent, Tony. Thank you for that update to the board.
Thank you.
I want to thank all the departments for your written reports. Thank you for addressing them here, so the public could get a glimpse of a little bit of what we have the full package of. But for us, it's a snapshot of what each and every one of you do, so please take our appreciation back to all the staff members who provide just incredible services to fellow employees here in the township building and all of our community. So we appreciate all of the work that you do, and just send my appreciation. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. There is no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. This motion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.